Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, December 12th. It is 7:01 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, members of council that are present in town council chambers, Jason Maurer, Didi Martin, Enid Lepelus, Shawna Lor, Terri Rooney, here digitally, Donald Lynn Wales, and Kevin Reed. All members of council are present. All right. If there's no objection, I'm going to pass the consent calendar as presented. There is no objection, and it's now passed. As that communication items A through P, be incorporated into the minutes of our item B, public participation. Is there any member of the public who would like to participate? If you are here digitally, either through a phone, or tablet, or your computer, please remember to unmute yourself if you'd like to participate during public participation. Last call, and we're closing public participation. We have no appointments this evening. Before we go to action items, I don't want to make anyone wait any longer than they have to, so I think there are a few members from Rotary here tonight, and I will turn this over to Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did you want to dispense with new business item A?
Yes. We will go with AI. So, can I have a motion to accept the following donation that exceeds $1,500? Item I, $9,572 from Rotary Club of Monroe for the following: $825 for the food pantry, $1,000 for Project Warmth, and $7,747 in in-kind donations of a fire pit for the Senior Center.
So moved.
Seconded. Motion by Vice Chair Lepelus, seconded by Councilmember Maurer. Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you. So, we are extremely grateful for all these donations, and we have a lot of members here from the Rotary Club of Monroe, and their generous donation is primarily, I know, sourced from the annual golf outing fundraiser that was done, and once again raised money primarily to support our community. And as you noted, over seven, almost $8,000 is being donated for the Senior Center, for a wonderful outdoor space that our Senior Center Director has been wanting to implement for some time, as well as supporting Project Warmth and our food pantry. I actually think they've got an additional $25 in for that, that's on the big check that will be on your agenda next meeting, but, you know, I want to just thank everyone for all their hard work and generosity, and with that, I know that we'd love to do a little formal check presentation to the town.
All right. So, we'll vote on it first. Is there any Rotary that would like to speak, or not at this time?
No, it's our pleasure to make this contribution to the town. We've been doing projects in the town for the last 25 years, and it's a good field to give you guys money.
Well, we'll gladly accept it. Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion?
Should we just amend the motion to up it by $25?
You certainly could if you want to up the, it's the food pantry number.
Right. So, I believe, amend the motion to be acceptance of the donation of $9,597 from Rotary Club of Monroe for the following: $850 for the food pantry, $1,000 for Project Warmth, and $7,747 of in-kind donations of a fire pit for the Senior Center.
Seconded.
Seconded by Didi Martin. Any discussion on the amendment?
I have a different number.
Uh-oh.
96, 22 plus 25.
96.
96, 72.
72 plus 25 would be 97.
You must have two extra $25. So, you want to make it 875?
875. All right. Withdraw. Withdraw your motion.
There's two, there's one check for five and one for 375. We're throwing another one.
Yeah, you did give me, you did get, the one you just gave me is for 375, so it is, it is actually 50 more than the, um...
Oh, it's on.
Yep.
So, it's not withdrawing.
No, withdraw it, and we'll give you a new number.
Your next.
That is the extra 25.
No, it's...
95. There's 50 additional of what's on here?
All right. You got the number?
Yep. It's, all right, so it's a total of $9,622 with 875 for project, for food pantry, and the other two numbers are correct.
Okay. $50 additional for food pantry. So, withdraw the original motion to amend, motion to amend the new business AI to accept the following donation: $9,622 from Rotary Club of Monroe for the following: $875 for the food pantry, $1,000 for Project Warmth, and $7,747 of an in-kind donation of a fire pit for the Senior Center.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Didi Martin, any discussion on the amendment? Unless someone's going to throw in more money.
All right.
Like one of those, you know?
Yeah. We'll lie here 9,22.
So, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to vote for the amendment. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, as fast as nine to zero. Now, we'll vote on the now amended motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, as fast as nine to zero. Thank you very much.
I'd like to light the Rotarians up to, is that the check?
This way against. Who's got the flag behind us?
Give him a spin around.
We're not informed.
Yeah.
Don't worry about it.
All right, council members back there, let's go smile too. All right, you're in it. And one more. Rotary. Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Back to our regularly hot programs. Well, thank you very much. We'll just finish out with item A. Can I have a motion to accept the following donation that exceeds $1,500, $3,000 from Jensen Tire Auto and Marine LLC for Project Warmth?
So moved.
Seconded. Motion by Vice Chair Lepelus, seconded by Councilmember Maurer.
I think that was the item.
Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, our gratitude to Jensen Tire Auto and Marine. They have been a great corporate citizen of Monroe. They've donated to many, many causes, and they generate, they donate generously, and we greatly appreciate what they're doing here for Project Warmth.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote on the acceptance of $3,000 from Jensen Tire Auto and Marine LLC for Project Warmth. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, as fast as nine to zero. And now, we will go back to our action items. Item A, Town Council Committee Finance, Education, Health, Public Safety Matters. Madam Vice Chair.
We've not met since the last time.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Town Council Command, Planing, Zoning, Public Works, Parks and Recreation Matters. Councilmember Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have not met since last meeting. Councilwoman Martin, has anything to talk to you about Parks and Rec?
I have just a few notes from the director. Good time for candy in my mouth. The fall sports and winter programs are in full swing. Fall cleanup is completed at Wolf Park, Town Hall, and Wedmont. Going to be using St. Jude's Gym space where additional space needed for programs that can't accommodate anymore in the schools. A field project bid document was reviewed by the commission, and the town attorney has seen it, and the announcement will be published in the paper in January. So, that's good news. I've been waiting a long time for that. As we learned in strategic projects, the, their budget is pretty well set, and the commission voted on their fees. I think we'll probably see how most of the programs.
Thank you. Town Council Command, Legislative and Administrative Matters, Mr. Reed.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did meet tonight. We went over several items of new business in our agenda. I'm going to read you off a few of them. Jude Roman Catholic Church Corporation, Second Amendment. We talked about PVC Guru Memorandum of Understanding, the N-Safe for Licensed Environmental Professional Oversight of Wetlands Restoration in Corey Backville. We talked about the Director of Health Employment Agreement, tie and bond independent contractor agreement, Otis Signature Contract, as well as HW Towns LLC General Service Agreement, all have passed for consideration at council tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Strategic and Committee, we did have a meeting in between town council meetings. We were able to hear from all the departments regarding their capital budget requests. We will have, there was no vote taken that evening, other than recommending that the two vehicles asked for by the fire services were recommended to be part of this year's capital project. One was a quick attack mini pumper for Monroe Fire, and Stevenson was a refurbishment of a apparatus that they currently have. We will meet again in the month of January to more fully consider all of those projects and when those projects should be pursued, and if those projects should be pursued, meaning the entire capital plan. I will circulate the date in the coming weeks, but that is expected to be in January. EMS Building Committee, Mr. Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Glad to report this meeting. I'll try to shorten it up. Since our last meeting, a lot has changed. The curbing is in. I don't know if anybody's went by there, but it's been recently paved. I think they did a great, great job, almost a flawless job there. The interior of the building has now been fitted up for the kitchens, all the living quarters, most of the cabinetry is in, ceilings are in, the flooring is in. EMS personnel is now in the facility, operating. So, that's going very smooth. Right now, we're in a situation where the siding has started. The manpower for the siding company has been small, but they're making progress. If anybody's been by there, they're definitely making some progress, so we should see the conclusion of the siding within a couple of weeks, hopefully. I'd like it to be shorter, but with weather and stuff, you know, outdoor things, so that's going very well. It's online as far as communications, fire, all of that stuff is online, so now it is completely active as far as the electronics in the building. Also, also, oh, the one thing I wanted to say is, we have a situation with the flooring, because the floor, now that it's getting cold, it has a situation where the cold temperatures could pop that floor, so we've made a decision to do that in the spring. It's better under warmer temperatures. It's an expensive floor, and if we put it down now, run the risk of it failing down the road, so we certainly don't want that. So, we have that. The garage doors, I believe, have been ordered, so when they come in, that will be installed, those will be installed. And trying to think if there's anything else. I think that's it. The, yeah, so what remains to be done is the garage doors, the siding, the floor, the refinishing of the walls that we voted on in council, which was in addition to it. And I think that's it. We're basically, we're very close to punch list. At this point, it's, it's done very well financially. Public infrastructure has done a great job keeping people in check, keeping people in line. The budget that we put forward for this job looks to be perfect under circumstances of COVID and material increases, so I'm very happy with the way all of that went. So, other than the few items that have to be done, the building is functional, it's operational, and if anybody has a chance to go by there, take a look, I think it's looking pretty good, in and out, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Asking a good question.
Of course.
What kind of floor do they have now? I mean, what floor will they be living with for a while? Is it concrete or what?
There's several different types of flooring. I mean, which flooring are you asking about?
You said the flooring wouldn't be put down.
Yeah, so that's the, it's like an imitation hardwood flooring, you know, the vinyl flooring that's glued down, but there's also carpeting in there as well, and then the epoxy flooring is what's left.
So, none of the existing flooring, no matter what it might be, has been pulled up yet?
That was all demoed months ago in the beginning of the construction.
So, what's on the floor now?
The new vinyl hardwood flooring and the carpeting, and the epoxy that's going into the garage.
Okay. I misunderstood you then. I thought you said the flooring couldn't be put down.
No, the epoxy. The epoxy in the garage couldn't be put down because of the temperature.
Okay.
So, it's basically a two-part system that they mix together, that they put down, and if it's not under temperature, it's humid, humidity sensitive, it's temperature sensitive.
I understand. I thought you meant the floor, I mean, like carpet or hardwood?
No, all of the areas that are heated, that are generally heated, that are heated now because everything's operational, those are all done.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Open Space Preservation Acquisition Committee, Mr. Lor.
Mr. Chairman, we have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you. And Mr. First Selectman, your update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, for this evening, first, happy to announce that coming hopefully very soon will be our new refurbished website. With that change, we will be launching our new URL, which will be monroect.gov. The technology department's been working with all the town departments, my office, our web host provider, we've been doing a lot of training, and we'll be preparing, hopefully do, we're targeting by the end of the year to launch the new site, and obviously, we'll send out more information to the public when that's, when that's ready to happen, but looking forward to that. Update on the Wolf Park Fields project, the bid package has been completed, and it's being released on January 9th, just to get past the holiday season and make sure we have a robust response. Response deadline will be February 9th. Pepper Street, as I'm sure you all are aware, the base paving has been completed at the Jockey Hall Culvert. Obviously, as I reported earlier, all that will be subject to a final, you know, the final paving will be done in the spring, and plans are progressing for the off-road work that we discussed at the last update, the most significant being the parapets at the culvert. So, that's in, it's in good shape for the winter. I am happy and honored to recognize some service milestones of employees. There's about, I think there's 17 people here that have reached a milestone in service, and I just wanted to publicly recognize them, so they're in the update there, and I'll be, I'll be sharing this as well, and I just thank them for their dedication and hard work. It is much appreciated. I think our longest tenured folks here, there's two people with 35 years of service, so we're very grateful. And new business updates, we have a few tonight. I mentioned at a prior meeting, it was some time ago, there were plans for a storage facility, a self-storage facility at the former Stevenson lumber site. We do have an application for a company, it's going to be called A Little More Space. They were, they are proposing construction of four new buildings, that'll be just over 14,000 square feet. That will be, the intent is to be to utilize that once they are constructed, and then there's an existing 27,000 square foot building that's currently being used for warehousing that, over in approximately five years, that would phase out of that warehousing and be intent to be convert that to additional storage units. That's that. The Duncan, the Duncan project on 111 or Village Square is moving forward. They had been waiting for some time for Connecticut DOT to give them approvals. That has to do with being on the state road and the traffic light. We were recently informed that that approval has now been received, so they are ready to move forward, but with the winter coming up, they're not planning on construction until after the first of the year, probably in the March timeframe. We have a new business open at 695 Main Street, Golf Oasis. That is a indoor golf facility and lounge. We're working to schedule ribbon cutting, and last but certainly not least, Panera Bread will be having their grand opening ribbon cutting this week, December 14th at 10:00 AM. That's it.
All right. I am going to close our action items for the evening. All right. So, feel bad kicking all these people out, so I'm taking unfinished, oh, we can't.
I'm still actually waiting for the town attorney to dial in, so if you want to...
I can see him pop up.
Oh, did he?
But he's not there anymore.
Okay.
But we're going to skip down to unfinished business for now.
Yeah.
We will have the annual report, Town Council, from the Sustainable CT Committee. Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as you're aware, this council supported our efforts to join in on the Sustainable CT program. Mr. Halsworth has been leading the committee of staff that was established at that time to work towards the Sustainable CT certi, excuse me, certification, and he's here tonight basically just to provide you with this annual update and report. As you can see, I know that, you know, the intent is this kind of be like an executive summary. I just want to recognize Bill and the team, this, this is a, think of it almost as an accreditation process with, level of detail is pretty excruciating at times. There is a lot of data, a lot of stuff to compile. They're well on the way of organizing that, and you see most of these efforts in the domains involved are in, are in progress, and there's just a lot of work going on, and it's, it's going to be an ongoing effort, and I think the intent is hopefully, and I mean, they do it in cycles, but in one of the 2023 cycles, we're trying to be ready for the, for an application. So, with that, Bill?
Thank you, Ken. Chairman members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening on sustainable CT activities. As you can see from our executive summary, we have been hard at work identifying projects that would meet the criteria for each of the 13 chapters that are outlined within the Sustainable CT manual. We've identified those projects and are moving forward with collecting the data and all of the other deliverables necessary to complete our application for sustainable. I don't know if anyone has any questions on any specifics for what's included in your packet, but I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Bill. What's the update? Once a year?
It is, yes. Annual, yeah.
Any question? Hearing none? Thank you, Bill.
I just have one comment. Sorry. On category three well-studied lands and natural resources, talks about current dark sky lighting regulations. Are those estate regulations, or are those ours?
We've adopted dark sky compliant lighting in our regulations for planning and zoning. I don't know if they're statewide regulations, or if they're town-specific, but they are part of our zoning regulations.
Many, many years ago, we did a lighting ordinance. I'm not even sure if it ever actually went through, but worked down a long time, so...
We've had a dark sky nation on the zoning works for quite some time.
Some zoning. This was from council.
Right.
Was actually going to be in the ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
No, I'll look and see if that is still...
I could look into it for you when Rick gets back, to find out if it's a statewide type of regulation, or if it's more town-specific.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Hearing none? Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Bill, I do see the town attorney is here.
He is, and I know he's on a tight schedule, so take unfinished business off, that'd be appreciated.
All right. Okay, so unfinished business, think to property and community center project update, executive session anticipated. Can I have a motion to enter executive session, inviting the first selectman and the town attorney?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Lepelus, is there a second?
One of these.
Seconded by Terri Rooney. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, as fast as nine to zero. It is not, it's 7:28 PM. Mr. First Selectman, can you please stop the recording? We are back on the record. It is 7:54 PM. We left executive session, no votes were taken. There are no other matters of unfinished business this evening. We're moving back to new business, new business, item C, Resolution 22-160. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 22-160, resolve that Kenneth and Kellogg, first selectmen of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the Second Amendment to the License Agreement and any associated documents binding between St. Jude Roman Catholic Church Corporation for Parks and Recreation Programs.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Maurer. Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as you're well aware, Parks and Rec Department utilizes the gymnasium at St. Jude for various programming in these months, and while obviously, we're still working through the longer-term plan with that facility, we want to be able to continue to avail ourselves of this, and this is simply agreement that simply just extends our arrangement through well into 2023, so that Missy can schedule those, those programs when mutually convenient.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for vote. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 22-160, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, as fast as nine to zero. NMD Resolution 22-161. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 22-161, resolve that Kenneth and Kellogg, first selectmen of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the memorandum of understanding and any associated documents binding between PVC Guru LLC for online author/speaker programs.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Maurer. Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, our library director, Nicole Signoli, has recommended that we utilize this organization, which provides access to a broad range of speakers and in an online format, and I think it's a good program, and I think she wants to move this forward. There's, you've got the review from the town attorney in your packet. She may be on, I'm wondering if that's reference desk admin, is that you, that might be Nicole, if you have any questions that I can't answer, but essentially, they are... if you have any questions that I can't answer. But essentially, they are providing this to us at discounted pricing, and again, gives us access to a broad range of speakers and, and authors for her to utilize and provide to our library patrons.
Thanks, First Selectman. Any other discussion? Mr. Chair. Mr. Mauer. I'll just add that we did discuss in LNA, in addition to the discount, these, some of these speakers and programs are things that would not be available otherwise. So even not taking into account the discount, there is additional services that are rendered to make up for the slight fee, which is only twenty-five hundred. Mr. Mauer. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution twenty-two dash one six one, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes nine to zero. Item E, Resolution twenty-two one six two. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution twenty-two dash one six two, resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first electman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the proposal for licensed environmental professional oversight of wetlands restoration and quarry backfill operations dated December seventh, two thousand twenty-two, and any associated documents by and between NSAFE Incorporated for professional environmental monitoring services.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Mauer. Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you. You'll recall that the town had previously engaged NSAFE for their oversight of the wetlands restoration and the backfill operations, which were approved by the wetlands, inland wetlands commission and Planning and Zoning Commission respectively for this, this site at Four Independence Drive. This was pursuant to those, those approvals that required monitoring and the requirement that the property owner pay for such monitoring. It's been a report that's progressing very well, but there is an ongoing independent monitoring that was kind of open term that we originally had with our current agreement, expired at the end of the year. So they provided a refreshed proposal to extend services through June thirtieth of twenty-three. Again, the cost will be borne by the property owner. There's a letter in your packet from the property owner confirming their authorization and agreement to pay for those services, as well as the memo from the town attorney. And I ask that you adopt this resolution so we can continue on this work to, to rectify the property at these, at these two parcels.
So look, if we go beyond the June thirtieth extension for that amount of money, I think it was forty-eight thousand.
Right, right.
It's borne by the property owner. Will that be a continuation of the initial expenses beyond that activity? Property owner would have to be renegotiated again at that.
No, I would, I would presume to the extent, you know, if, if, if the conditions have not been met to the satisfaction of those two commissions, I would presume that we'd be in the same position as we are now, where we would have to entertain an extension and perhaps another scope of services that would allow, you know, allow them to continue on the backfill and the restoration efforts.
So the extension, you know, the other extension, six more months. This is no way, shape, or form causing any financial burdens to the town?
None at all, no. Again, I think we're restoring a parcel that is, this is, you know, we're, we're facilitating a restoration effort that I think is, you know, long overdue. So it's a good thing for the town.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. I'm going to call for vote. All those in favor of adopting Resolution twenty-two dash one six two, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes nine to zero. Item F, Resolution twenty-two dash one six three. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution twenty-two dash one six three, resolved that upon approval of the State Commissioner of Public Health, the Town Council hereby confirms the appointment of Amy C. Lahany as Director of Health, and furthermore authorizes Kenneth M. Kellogg, first electman of the Town of Monroe, to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the employment agreement and any associated documents by and between Amy C. Lahany.
Madam Vice Chair, is there a second? Second, Mr. Mauer. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I am very pleased to report that I've nominated Amy Lahany as our next Director of Health. The, the memo that I originally wrote on Friday is actually out of date already. We have already received the approval from the State Department of Public Health Commissioner, so that process is done. Ms. Lahany has over seventeen years of public health experience in multiple communities, Reading, Stanford, Fairfield, and Bridgeport. She is a registered sanitarian, so she has extensive experience in environmental health and health inspections. She's functioned as an acting health department, health director at the, in Fairfield, and she currently, most recently, was serving as the Deputy Director of Health and Social Services for the city of Bridgeport. She has a master's in public health from Southern, and I am very excited to have her join us. I believe she is, I believe she's actually on the screen if she wants to turn her, I don't know if she can hear us, or, there she is.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Good, good.
So pursuant to our town code, the Board of Health did, did meet and voted to recommend this appointment in a meeting on December second. And as per state law, a municipal health director is employed through an employment agreement. And it's for that, that is why we have one draft here before you with the assistance of our Labor Council. And I ask that you move this forward so we can finalize and get Amy started a week from today. But before you vote, I, I wanted to give you the opportunity to meet Amy, at least virtually at this point, and certainly ask any questions you want to ask at this time. So other than just saying hi.
Mr. O'Rourke.
Mr. First Selectman.
Yes.
Parts to the compensation under item A, salary, second sentence, the new health administrator may receive a performance-based salary increases in the future, which are also dependent on budgetary issues. Is there any further detail that could be shared on that point?
In regards to increases?
Yeah, the performance, you know, it's basically, there's, there's a salary, and then there's, you know, a second part of that that may receive performance-based salary increases in the future, which are also dependent on budgetary issues.
So all, all of the unaffiliated or non-union employees in town are certainly eligible for an annual merit increase. For unaffiliated personnel, it is based upon overall satisfactory performance and within the parameters of what is budgeted, right? So there's wage adjustments that are budgeted in the annual budget process and to the extent that, so this is basically just recognizing that the health director is eligible for a merit, an annual merit increase, much like any other director, department head.
Nothing, nothing out of the ordinary.
Nothing out of the ordinary at all, no.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Mr. Mauer. Welcome to Monroe.
Thank you.
All right. And, all those in favor of adopting Resolution twenty-two one six three, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. See you on Monday.
Thank you.
Item G, Resolution twenty-two one six four. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution twenty-two dash one six four, resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first electman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the independent contractor agreement and any associated documents by and between tie and bond for on-call engineering services.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Mauer. Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you. So there is a, there's a clear need to have some on-call engineering services. This is something that we've been contemplating. We had contemplated for some time for smaller projects, smaller kind of scope and design effort projects, but also now with the retirement of our town engineer, we're just kind of routine town engineer services during the transition period. Our director, Chris Nowacki, has done some research and has recommended tie and bond to provide those services. We're familiar with that firm. They currently provide services to the town and have for many years for the MS four project. He, through our purchasing policy, identified a publicly competitive public bid from the Town of Trumbull that was awarded to tie and bond at those rates. So we have before you a contract that was negotiated with the town attorney, which incorporates that bid. And obviously, those, you know, as well as tie and bond supplemental terms and conditions, the town attorney's got his opinion in your packet as well. And I'd ask that we move this forward so we can continue to move, move those efforts forward, both for the smaller projects as well as routine services for the, for the town while we are recruiting for a new town engineer.
Any other discussion? Mr. O'Rourke.
The, the outline with regards to the hourly rate for the various positions that are involved in this, I guess the question I have is that that falls within the realm of normal or, or, you know, you know, the going rate, as they say.
Well, again, I don't know if Mr. Nowacki is on. He was going to try and log in. Chris, if you're one of those-
Good evening, I am here.
Ah, you are, you are the mysterious, you are the mysterious RD admin.
I thought that-
So I'll just, I'll just say that I know that because this was competitively bid, I would, you know, presume that these are good rates, but Chris, did you want to speak to that?
They are good rates. They, they are in true tune with the services as outlined. However, tie and bond's price structure is actually lower than the majority of the other bids that we evaluated throughout the process. Tie and bond, in addition, is a no-conflict engineering service as well, so they don't provide services currently for, for any projects that are coming before us or typically come before us as well. So, but the pricing structure is in line on the lower side.
The other thing I would just note is, as you can, as you'll see in the, in the cover agreement, our agreement with them, this provides the kind of blanket authority for us to, for the department, for Chris, to engage tie and bond for very specific projects. So each one would be done individually with its own purchase order, with a clear, you know, expenditure threshold in that regard. So we still are in, you know, there's a, there's a control beckons in there. It's not, you know, there's not, there's no open checkbook here, you know, there's, it's, it's project by project.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other discussion?
Would this continue on after, if there were a new town engineer?
I, I think it would, it would, to the extent that we would use them, but again, for some of those smaller projects where we need support of on-call engineering just to get a, a scope and design work done, that might be beyond the, you know, the bandwidth of just routine day-to-day services.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. I'm going to call for vote. All those in favor of adopting Resolution twenty-two one six four, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes nine to zero. Item H, Resolution twenty-two dash one six five. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution twenty-two dash one six five, resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first electman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the signature contract and any associated documents by and between Otis Elevator Company for elevator maintenance services.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second? Second. Second by Mr. Rooney. Mr. Kellogg.
So the, there's a agreement with Otis Elevator, a five-year agreement that is expiring. They provided us with a new five-year agreement. It's been reviewed by Frank, and this is obviously for the elevator at the library.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
With the, I guess, I should probably know this, but with trying to gauge how much increase from the previous contract to the new contract.
I know that they, that Nicole had relayed that if we had got this sum by the end of the year, they, there would be a, actually be a reduction in their standard fee. I don't, she did not highlight for me any budgetary concerns relative to this, this cost, so I presume it's in line with, with budget.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. I'm going to call for vote. All those in favor of adopting Resolution twenty-two dash one six five, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes nine to zero. Item I, Resolution twenty-two dash one six six. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution twenty-two dash one six six, resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first electman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the general service agreement and any associated documents by and between HW Temps LLC, Temporary Staffing Services.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Mauer. Kellogg.
So on occasion, the town utilizes temporary staff during transitional periods and for vacation coverage. This is typically in administrative functions, like administrative assistants. Although we often can find individuals that are available on our own, our HR director, Craig Hirsch, has recommended that we have a temporary staffing service, an agency available if we need to act quickly or otherwise having difficulty filling it on our own. He's researched different options and has recommended this agreement with HW Temps LLC. Again, you know, this is utilized in very specific circumstances, recognizing that you do pay a premium for, for staff from a temp agency, but, you know, living within our budget, budgetary parameters, I think it's a good solution to have, particularly when we, again, we need to act quickly and we, you know, don't have the luxury of, of wanting to delay while we're recruiting or otherwise concerned about fit for, you know, various individuals. So with that, is there anything else that Craig can answer?
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Hearing none. I'm going to call for vote. All those in favor of adopting Resolution twenty-two dash one six six, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes nine to zero. May I make a motion to adopt the proposed regular meeting dates for twenty-twenty-three, as outlined in the memo, dated December sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Is there a second? Second?
Second.
By Mr. Mauer. Any discussion? Just one question? Yes? The Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, what is the conflict on the twenty, September twenty-fifth?
One is Russia, the one is Canada. I made the decree of change.
There we go. Question answered. All right. Hearing none. I'm going to call for vote. All those in favor of adopting the meeting dates for twenty-twenty-three, say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes nine to zero. Is there anyone that would like to participate on St. Jude's property and community center project? Or the annual report to Town Council for Sustainable CT Committee? Hearing none. Close participation for the event. I'm adjouring this meeting at eight seventy p.m. Happy holidays.